... indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Barth.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Clepper. Clepper.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Present.
Bassett.
Here. Okay, I know a lot of you didn't get your council packets, so approval of the bills, take some time. But I'll entertain a motion when we get ready.
I'll second it.
Question real quick, um, the part about the Scout Troop 216, the gazebo, did you guys approve it being on the corner lot or just somewhere on village?
I think it was the corner lot.
That's what I thought you guys said.
Yes.
This here just was saying that it was gonna be without a specific location, just village property. That's the reason why I voted.
I can make a change before we vote next time.
That's the reason why I voted the other way.
Okay, any other questions about the minutes? Roll call.
Did you wanna table it till next time, wanna make a correction?
I think you can make the correction if everybody's agreed to it.
Okay, I will, and I'll bring it back next time.
With the corrected minutes, but we can approve them.
Uh huh.
Okay, roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Clepper.
Yes. Okay, approval of the bills, take your time if you have them in front of you.
The Choice One Engineering camp with the industrial vital, we talked about that real quickly in our committee, are we about done with their charges for their design?
That was the last one, the rest of their contract when they originally sent it, they had for like the bidding and stuff that would come after that, but yeah, as far as the design, that should be the last for them.
Kent on configuration calibration services LLC for the wastewater treatment. Is that for just to calibrate those, or was that to install them, or was that for them, or?
That's part of their yearly test.
That's the annual calibration valve flow meter down there, that's not the.
That's not the ones that we need to install.
That's not the ones for the CS, that's the annual calibration for the flow meter.
We got any projection on when we're gonna put those in, the other ones in, and?
I heard they said sometime in the end of February, and I haven't heard back.
We don't have a projection on cost either.
Did I give you? I'll double check, I think I sent a fax forward, an email to Kent with that.
Maybe you could forward that to wastewater treatment, or to the Water Service Committee?
Yeah.
So we have an idea of what we've got coming up on that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Here.
Clepper.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yep.
Juan.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
I'm staying.
Okay, boards and commissions in your packet is the nuisance board, you see they're very, very active, a lot going on, continue going to meet every month, so. Any questions on that?
When is the next meeting?
March 3rd at 1:00.
On something we had talked about when I was in your office earlier today, I seen they pulled two loads out this afternoon.
They're on High Street. Anybody got any questions on the nuisance board? Very active, which is good. Okay. Committee reports, personnel met February 5th.
Yeah, I'll talk about that one, we met, we talked about a couple items, one of them was, we know Kent's a very busy, busy guy, and we don't wanna take for granted how important his position is, and we've been talking, or thinking, a lot of us about, I know we met here a couple of meetings ago, and talked about posting an ad for Kent, his a village administrator position, and letting Kent have time to train him, and just really wanna maybe think about posting something sooner than later, so Kent has time to train the individual, we know there's a lot of projects going on right now, and I know Kent doesn't wanna be doing this forever, but I don't think Kent can train somebody to do his job in a month or two either, so it's gonna take some time, so just kinda really need to consider maybe posting his job sooner than later, so we can take time to get good qualified applications, good candidates, take time to interview them all, not just a 15-minute ordeal between each one, let all the departments talk to him, him or her, and trying somebody to, for Kent's opening, that will be coming up. The other one was a suggestion from a village employee about meeting with village employees, they've talked, I guess years ago, before I was on council, that the Personnel Committee used to meet with all departments, police fire EMS, street water, Parks Department, and be more of a one-on-one basis, if, let's put a sign-up sheet out there, if somebody would like to meet with us between, we're gonna do the very first one, March 14th, we're gonna start at 9:30, we'll get a sign-up sheet around, if you think you need 15 minutes to talk to us, or half an hour, just fill up, fill out a slot, we'll stay longer, we're kinda gonna say 9:30 to 11:30, just to kinda get an idea, we don't wanna be here for six or eight hours straight, but with big gaps in between it, but we'll stay later than 11:30 if needed, if there's a lot of, a lot of people that'd like to talk to us, we would like to start March 14th, and 9:30 to 11:30, and we'd like to start off with the street and water department, and then we'll pick another date, maybe in April, and meet with like the police fire EMS, and then move on, and kinda see what kind of a input we have from everyone, we're not saying we can fix anything or correct anything, but sometimes it's easier to, we listen to an employee, one-on-one, without supervisors or bosses or anything else, and kinda find out what's going on in each department, and how maybe we can make the morale or make people happier, so we're gonna start out on March 14th, so.
You have a question about that part?
Yeah.
That first date, you said street and water, is that also wastewater?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. I'll have a sign-up sheet tomorrow, I wanna post it out, or take it around to your department, so, okay. That was it for the personnel meeting.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Kent, uh. I don't wanna say this, so let's just step on your toes. Do you, everything that we just talked about in our two-hour meeting before this meeting, do you, do you want somebody in here at this point in time, or would you rather get some of this stuff caught up before you start training somebody? What's your opinion? What, what do you want?
I'd rather get stuff all figured out versus trying to train somebody at the same time. I thought last meeting was pretty much left, I would tell folks when they're, thought they're, could go ahead and start advertising, but there again, whatever, I'll work with whatever you guys come up with.
We, we want some timeline, you're thinking, I think you mentioned maybe August, September, start maybe then.
Kinda see how some of this stuff.
Cause you're willing to stay on whatever it takes.
Yeah, I guess.
Which is a good.
Well, I thought we talked like a year.
Yeah, that's what I remember too.
Yeah. But you wanna, you, you wanna get, get us all our financing, get everything lined up before you decide to head to T.O. on or something.
I didn't know if it was good for new individual to come in and kinda see some of that stuff. You know, don't come into the middle of the project and not see some of the stuff at the beginning, so that's why.
Had I not just set, set, set through that last two hours, I would agree with you, but I don't agree with you now.
Okay.
He has, he needs to get caught up.
There'll be plenty coming up the next year or two, the, yeah, there, I just leave not, but there again, if you do it, you do it.
Just, I guess just so it's clear, then the last, or two weeks ago, what was, what was the decision as far as job listings go?
We're gonna post something here summertime, and start looking for a candidate to replace Kent, I just don't wanna take the, you know, take time from, you know, maybe training potential, and I know there's a lot of stuff going on, and sometimes it's easier if you get hired in at the beginning of projects, than in the middle or the end of them, I mean, I know when we hired the previous individual that took Kent's place, we had Hayward Drive going on, and there's a lot of stuff that, not knowing what had happened from the very beginning of when Hayward Drive started, light locations, you know, the swells and everything else, and the person come in, not knowing, well, it was all verbally agreed upon or written, and trying to hard, kinda hard for him to find maybe some of the notes, and that's why I didn't know if it'd be advantageous for us to find somebody at the beginning of all the projects, where Kent could train him right from the get-go, so.
Well, to keep up to date on that, we have projects kinda coming into fruition here within the next year, two, and three years out, so.
Yeah, so you're staying three anymore?
I think we're never starting, more projects.
And I'll just, nah, I'll bite my tongue. No, I mean, it could've worked much better last time, in my opinion, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Well, you just put T.O. on on the back burner, huh? We got things to do.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks Eric. Finance committee met February the 5th.
Yeah, well, we met with Sandy Kessler, with Mommy Valley Planning, Kent Miller was here, Kent requested the meeting because there's a lot of projects coming up, kinda what we're talking about, also looking at different types of funding ideas and sources, I believe that's what you guys met about here the last two hours before this meeting, there's, like I said, the five big projects going on, and different funding, RPIG, CDBG money, and grant money, also looked at some other financing options, H2O Ohio funding, and TIF financing, Kent would be, I just kinda left it basic, cause I could've had four pages of notes, but Kent was just looking at prioritizing the, the different items, and the different funding options, so we just had a good, about an hour and a half meeting that day, which you guys kinda led into your meeting tonight, so if you guys have any questions, I guess, read through it, or Kent might be able to answer more after their two-hour meeting tonight when he met with street water.
The only thing I'll add on this, cause I have found out since, TIF would not apply, Sandy did get back to me on that, and I'm gonna add the H2O Ohio, I did some more checking on that, but I need to get with R cap about the raids, I was gonna run some stuff past them, but otherwise Mike can cover it all when he does committee report.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks Eric. Leasing fire met the 10th of February.
Yes, the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the expenditures on unit 501, the ambulance, they had the cost of repairs exceeded $9,000, correct Cheryl, for that, and we brought up what we could do about replacing it, cause repairs, it's getting too expensive for, it's a 2001 Ford with an 86 box, and John Elwood was gonna check in for some used ones, and the cost of the used ones were up there quite a bit, 100K, one with 100,000 miles is approximately 120,000 miles, or 120,000 dollars. And Cheryl and Scott was gonna go to Hicksville Bank to check on loan to replacement, correct?
As soon as they give me some good numbers.
Yes, and I don't know if that, anything's been done on that, do you know, Scott? Okay, so that's where we're standing about that, see what we can do to replace what we do have.
Okay, thanks Larry.
Can I ask what's, what's wrong with, with the unit, that it needs $9,000?
Well, they replaced the rear end in it, correct?
There's been continuous problems with rear end, front suspension.
And it's still having a little noise issues after taking it to Smithson Rosebox Garage, correct?
Okay, any other questions?
We, one other, we had a contingency, but we did away with that, didn't we?
There's what, 65,000 or 65?
They have 60,000.
60, yeah, okay, we haven't replenished that several years, so it just carries over. Thank you. Good questions, any other? Okay. Administrators report.
I don't have anything, but I, I'll give a quick recap about what we talked about beforehand. Various projects coming up, without going into a whole lot of detail, the well fields are up perceived with that, I will get with the engineer to start developing plans on the latest options we were getting, I'll also follow up with Mommy Valley Planning with a question, the West High Street Sewer, we are going, keep proceeding with doing that construction this year, run out the bid in around May or June, and I got some follow-up work to do on that as well, that I'll pass along to the committee, the water tower, we're still looking at 2022 construction, with applying for, I won't sound out the grant, but anyway, we'll do that application next year, should have things lined up, Defiance Avenue Lift Station, we're still looking at doing in 2021 construction, we'll be interviewing, hopefully weather permitting this time around, the firm's on March 4th, so we can get engineer hired to start to design on that lift station, and that's pretty much it in a nutshell. If anybody's got anything else they wanna add or expand on, that's fine.
Any other questions for the administrator? Troy, you got your report?
Yeah, I said a couple of things, first reading a resolution 2020-01, by caption only, a resolution authorizing the establishment of Hicksville Downtown Design Review Board and adopting design standards and declaring an emergency, this is the revision of the one we previously tabled, and I added the language in there, making it so that the Secretary of Interiors list of guidelines, so to speak, only apply, are only intended to apply in circumstances where federal funding is being sought for those renovations, and they're required to apply, so the key on this is, we gotta, we gotta pass this to get it, everything moving on that, but then we have to appoint the people to the board, and then once they're appointed, they're gonna have to develop the standards, which I will obviously have to be involved with, to, you know, however, I mean, I don't necessarily have to be involved in what the committee or council thinks are appropriate standards, other than to make sure that this portion of it's addressed properly in there.
Suspend the rules.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Clepper.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Second, third readings, by caption only, a resolution 2020-01, a resolution authorizing the establishment of Hicksville Downtown Design Review Board and adopting design standards and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Clepper.
Yes. So if anybody's interested, I got to appoint three members of the community, I've got a couple people in mind, but if anybody wants to be on that?
What was the question? I was talking.
Just like school, she was.
Design review board for the downtown, there's three businesses that want to update their facilities, so I'm looking for three, would you be interested? Okay, got one, but I'll have to bring it back the next meeting.
Yeah, and just.
Okay.
Well, this is for the entire downtown business district, not just these three businesses that adopt.
But it's.
It would be an ongoing board, it won't be just like one and done, or whatever, it'll be something that, you know, people, you know, come off of.
And how soon?
I think the key is, we, with this passed, as I recall, and it goes back far enough, that right before Diane was leaving, she had a document that they needed her to sign, which is what generated this, is saying that we do have standards in place, or that we have, okay, that, you know, so now that document can be signed, truthfully signed.
And the council has to approve the three that I nominate.
That's, I mean, I think you can nominate, you can nominate them for that, but yeah, like everything else, it's subject to their approval. And I also had, and I don't see it's not on the agenda, but the resolution 20-02, which is to do with Patrolman Taylor's benefits that we talked about before, I would note before I read it, that Cheryl caught me, I had two versions of it, one that had the improper start date for him, and the one that had the proper start date, as I understand it, it's supposed to be February the 26th. Okay, so we'll have to make that, that, that just changes the anniversary dates that are listed in there, as far as when his vacation was. So it'd be first reading a resolution 2020-02, or reading by caption only, a resolution establishing certain benefits for Christopher Taylor as patrolman for the village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, and this is basically what we talked about with his vacation being a little different, that's, that's all it is, he's gonna start with the year and after a year.
It's an emergency.
Yeah. Any questions on that resolution? I'll entertain a motion to need to suspend the rules on that.
I make a motion to suspend rules?
Yeah, primarily so that it's in place before.
Okay, second.
Yep.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Clepper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Barth.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
The second, third readings of rep, by caption only, resolution 2020-02, a resolution establishing certain benefits for Christopher Taylor as patrolman for the village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
So moved. Second. Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Clepper.
Yes.
So with that, I'll make those changes, first thing, Cheryl emailed the, those dates, then on the, on the Heinz Enterprise thing, I told him I wanted that done by February, trust you haven't gotten anything from him, Cheryl, I called him at the end of the week and left a message, so I'll start daily making calls to him, starting tomorrow, the land purchase, everything's going along, there, one, not really a snag in it or whatever, I got contacted by the title company last week, anybody that's done any bigger real estate projects, this is pretty regular, but the legal description for the one piece already has like four, like exceptions out of it, which is all that the engineer's office will permit you in order to transfer, so long story short, it's nothing we have to do, but a surveyor has to, instead of having, if you read a legal description, oftentimes you'll see, like out at our industrial park, if you've seen that, it has the whole thing described, and then it says lessen accept the parcel that we deeded to whomever, and lessen accept, and it gets real long and confusing, so they let you do that as long as it's the same owner, basically, but when you're transferring ownership, then they often require a new legal description to be done, so I'll say last Monday, they contacted me from the title company, and said, you know, that they were, they had it all, the property searched and everything, moving forward to get it, build it close, except for they were told by the engineer's office they had to get a new description, I talked to Mark Haver about it on Tuesday, and he basically said, call them up and tell them to, whoever's the quickest at doing those, just to tell them to go ahead and do it for them, get the new description, and so once that's done, which I was gonna follow up with tomorrow, and see who they talked to, and when, when they anticipated, it should be in a position then when we, then close.
You're talking a couple weeks?
Or less.
Okay, that's good.
Cause it shouldn't be too, it's not like going out and doing a whole survey, I mean, there's, and you can imagine out there, I mean, Larry's owned that for a long time, and so, for instance, he sold off the lot, not to, but owner where Nick Slattery lives now, he sold that off, so that's one exception, and maybe when it's sold, you bought a lot at some time, right? Yeah, right, but that's what I'm saying, is it's been the same ever since, and they just start accepting those things out of there, and then when he goes to transfer the whole parcel, that's when they tell you, you gotta do something about it, I mean, if it, if it passes through the family, they don't bother you with it, or whatever, but if it gets to the point where a new owner's gonna own the whole thing, they require it, so that's in the process, but it's, it's not a problem.
You feel confident that we can have a, have a closing and be done with it by, before March 1st?
Yeah, I believe so, and, and like I said, it's a little snag, so if there needs to be a week extension or something like that, everybody's on board, I mean, Mark and I talked about it last Tuesday, it's like, we just wanna get it done, and.
Big plans for that, so.
Yep, so, so I think that's all in order.
Okay, any questions for the solicitor? Okay, department head, Chief Dunning, you have anything to report? Oh, that's good.
I got one. Do we need plates on our front of our vehicles now?
Yes, until July 1st.
Till July 1st, okay.
And then I don't know what the law's gonna say.
Well, and there's a bill right now to.
Yeah.
Change it and to still require them, there's a bill that the police unions and people like that have gotten with some of the representatives to try and push that through, from a, for a safety standpoint, so it may not.
So when I get hit, if I'm head on, I can read the plates yet then?
Also, when they're chasing you, or coming up on you, when you're running away from a crime scene, they can read your license plate and know that it's you.
See, that's why Indiana's crime's so high, they never catch anybody with that plate missing, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, fire, Chief Kramer.
Nothing major, just a few updates on things, FEMA grant is moving right along, applied for three grants through the grant writer, spoke with him last week, one day, and things are in the works, this Saturday, we have four probationary firefighters that are gonna take their state test, they've all passed the class, and passed the state test, so hopefully after Saturday, we'll have four firefighter ones, and then the 14th of March will be a breakfast.
Can you name the four firefighters for?
Tyler Blair, Austin Henderson, Samantha Sal, and Ethan Hathaway.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
What day was the breakfast?
14th of March.
Beginning at?
7:00 AM. 7:01? 7:11.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, miss.
You wanna just send her up there next time?
Anything EMS?
I don't have anything EMS.
Park director, Val?
Well, I don't have much to say, but we're gonna try to find two more employees that we advertised before, and got in the application, but not one.
Okay, any questions for park director?
We have that budgeted to pay.
Any other questions? Fiscal officers report.
We have your fund status, and I know that, had questions about the general fund, which will get infusion in March of cash from the real estate tax, you have the January mayor's court and police department collections, and I also added a letter from the Ohio Municipal League Executive Director about, it has to do with workmen's comp and firemen, and, anyway, I wanted you to all be aware of what's going on in the legislature with this, it has to do with post-traumatic stress disorder related to firefighters, but the language has no cap and no ending, it's just forever and out there, and so they're wanting people to keep an eye on it, because everything needs to have a cap on it, especially if it's gonna be paid for by workers' comp. Peace officer, yep.
Does everybody get the emails from the OML, Councilman?
Yes.
You don't? Make sure he gets that, a lot of good stuff there, you know what's going on down the state, so. Okay, any questions? You got a report on the nurse board?
No, it's your collections, yeah.
Collections, okay.
I like that.
Okay. The only thing I have, the report is we got a nice, I got an email from Mary Smith, if you could get that back in. Okay. Says, "Dear Ron and Council, thank you for the generous words about the historical society Monday, last Monday, two weeks ago Monday. We were honored by their proclamation and lucky to have had early leadership from our many volunteers. Working with community and area groups was a good thing. The recognition from council was amazing. Signed, Mary Smith." Okay, anything else needs brought up from this council tonight? Anybody in the audience want to comment? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Do you second it?
Roll call.
I'll second Cheryl, nobody else.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Juan?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Needing a jerk?